This council meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This meeting of November 20th, 2023 was published in the Curry News and Star-Ledger, and placed on the borough’s website. Notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public, and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Dana Sullivan?
Here.
Council members Granville Brady, excuse us this evening, Tom Mitchell?
Here.
Gina Stravick?
Here.
Roger Vroom?
Here.
Teresa Bonner?
Here.
Randy Pitts?
Here.
Please rise, join me in the plaques, or if you don’t remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Too often, we begin our public meetings with moments of silence that recognize men and women who have contributed to our community. Every so often, we have a loss that transcends Somerville. We lost Rosalynn Carter, President, Jimmy Carter’s wife, over the weekend. She did a lot when she was in Washington, but her legacy lived well beyond that. And there’s not enough time to remember all of the causes that she championed, but I’d like to offer a moment of silence in the memory of First Lady Rosalynn Carter. Thank you. One set of minutes from November 6th, I’ll take a motion.
So move.
Second.
Council members Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
We have departmental reports and notices as listed. Just FYI for the public, our January 1st reorg meeting will be at Somerville High School. We have a new fire chief coming in, and the crowd hopefully will be, you know, large, and it might stretch the limits of this building. We’re looking forward to having our meetings here, but for the upcoming year, we’ll be at Somerville High School at noon on the 1st. All right, we have a presentation tonight for our environmental commission, and we’ll call on Jeff Linebor to come up.
Good evening. I need me to introduce myself for this year?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thanks. Jeff Linebor, 32, Lisa Terrace, here in Somerville. I am the Chair of Somerville’s Environmental Commission. It’s pleased to see you all again, council.
Would you introduce your members that are here with us?
For sure. We have Green Team and Environmental Commission members, Sandy Benz-Coder, our Secretary, Helene Venizelos, our Vice, my Vice Chair, Pamela Dorn with the Green Team, Jerry DeSappio with the Environmental Commission, and Roberta Harmon also with the Environmental Commission. And maybe one or two others are missing here too. Glenn Denny, as well as for Environmental Commission too.
Thank you all, and welcome.
Yeah.
Jeff, go ahead.
All right, thanks. All right. This report will look pretty similar to what we presented last year. Intend to take about 10 or so minutes. If you have any questions throughout it, feel free to interrupt. Happy to take some at the end as well. But I’ll just be going through what we did this year in Somerville between the members and how we kept ourselves busy here, so. I’ll go through our mission statements, membership, if who is on the commission, who we keep up with in the town and beyond, what we do for communication, and programs and events that we keep up with, certifications, as well as grants, funding, things that we had this year that we were able to put down into the town, literal roots, which is good to have, and our self-assessment and total volunteer hours as well. So our mission statement is to educate, advocate, and promote best policies and practices for the borough’s environment and the health and safety of its residents. We are a group of committed folks here. The asterisks next to individual names denote repeat multi-year members that we have here, including three, four, that have been with the commission for five years or greater. I’m really proud to say that we have retention, which is nice. When it comes to public service and volunteerism, it’s really nice to have the continuing commitment. And a lot of it goes to say that it’s, that we’re enabled by a good supporting council here too. So thank you for that. Our Green Team is very active with many things in town in particular, but a lot of times, our Green Team members become Environmental Commission members, which happened with one from this past year, and likely to happen with a couple this coming year as well. In Somerville, we have a lot of relationships. Many of the government officials here, the Planning Board, Department of Public Works, Recreation Departments, the Downtown Somerville Alliance, and the list goes on, including a couple businesses that we feature, have featured a sustainability highlight of what those businesses do in town. And we could talk about that more a little bit later. Photograph here is a view of our community garden that I’ll go through a little bit here as well. Beyond Somerville, we have a lot of other partners that help us do what we do. I would definitely want to highlight ANJAC, the Association for New Jersey Environmental Commissions. They certainly provide us with a lot of support and guidance, and give us a lot of education for what we can do, and learn about how we can be more effective as an organization. A lot of other organizations that are on here helped us organize events, as well as give us ideas and leadership, and otherwise provide grants or funding for the various things that we do in town. This year, as was last year, and I’m going to say that we just keep getting better and better, our communications and social media strategy has really taken off. We have some really great people. Every time that I say this, it’s just somebody who’s always younger than me that is good at reaching out and posting many other things that are going on. I want to say that, you know, environmental work in general, with where our hearts are, often can be tough to talk about because it can, if you go really deep into it, in times in society, especially in news headlines, it kind of makes you feel like, are we doing enough? And what we’ve decided to do is to keep our social media accounts lighthearted and otherwise provide a lot of tips for how to incorporate things into your own life. We tend to focus mostly on items in town or in the region. We keep the national stuff to the national stuff. It doesn’t really benefit the local residents here, so I think this stuff really goes well. Our sustainability spotlights, I do want to highlight in particular, we have two that we did this year, one with AMB Coffee, additionally, one with Turf Surfing Earth. And both of those organizations, those businesses have repeated, constantly posting our own collaboration that we had with them, where we interviewed the business owners to ask them, what do you guys do? And had cut video of sorts. Those things really kind of show what we do here in town, individual businesses that do it. And it’s not to say that we don’t support any other business. We just want to let people know what some of these ones are doing in town. So it makes a difference to folks that are really trying to put that onto their personal list. And if social media isn’t your jam, we do post on, through the borough itself, some help with sending out notifications and events that we do regularly outside of that. But nowadays, digital seems to be great for getting a lot of things out, so we focus a lot there. This year, and I’ll go through a couple programs and events we do, we held our annual Earth Day trash cleanup and seedling giveaway with the help of the DPW and some sponsors. Hundreds of seedlings were given away, which is photographed on the top left there, that give residents a free chance to take a look at what trees they can plant in their own yards, or even, we’ve given them some spots they can do around town as well. The J. Scott Memorial Community Garden, pictured on the bottom here, is near the Fire Engine, Fire Engine Number 1 on Veterans Memorial Drive. And we’ve had a lot of support to get it off the ground. This was our first public session with it, and I think we had a great success, looking forward to doing more. We had to turn away folks, which was a nice thing to have on our inaugural season. That’s run full-time by our Green Team. So a special shout-out to Rebecca, as well as Jerry, for making sure that does happen as it does. The Sustainable Jersey and PSCNG Energy Efficiency Partnership that’s listed is new this year and just getting off the ground. More of it will continue as we go. I’m not going to play the link to the promotional video that we had, but PSCNG and Sustainable Jersey have put together, have asked us to promote existing programs in town that residents can use to increase their energy efficiency at home. There’s grants, as well as funding available at any income level, but you have a lot of opportunity to get a lot of efficiencies at home. Myself, along with a handful of our members here, have used it at home and really have good things to say about it from many aspects. So I encourage residents to take a look at that. National Night Out that is put on in August was a way for everybody to get to meet who we are, and we had some giveaways such as seeds that are close to, or that are native seeds for home. And this year, the second item was a new one for us. The ANJAC asked us to host an inaugural regional environmental commission meeting with environmental commission representatives from five counties. So Hunterdon, Mercer, Somerset, Middlesex, and I forget the last one, a little bit on the east side over there. That, thank you, Union, yes. So they came out, and in this very room, we had a meeting where we talked about what we’re doing good, what we all want to do a little better, and I think slowly but surely we can get some more regional how-tos and how we can move along a little better and be better at what we do, because collaboration really does help out in a lot of these cases. We don’t work in a vacuum. Our rain garden that we have is one, this is our most prominent one, on Carroll Page Park. We are taking care of the maintenance for this, which oftentimes removes a lot of the overgrowth that goes there, but it’s an example of what green infrastructure can do in the community and how it can be put to use, and what it looks like for that matter. We do every year, and for our second year now is a town swap, and it’s something that we did over the Earth Day weekend, where curbside items are put up by residents to be reused or upcycled. And it takes a little bit of faith to say, please bring them back into your home if no one wants that particular item. But what it does is it gives items that are not loved at home a chance to be re-loved by other people in town. We are proud to say that we partnered with the MetLife Insurance Company and the New Jersey Tree Foundation to plant 35 trees that a handful of you on council here were as part of in the Walk Park, to replace ones that have been damaged or flood or just otherwise died of natural causes. But we think this really helped grow what the parks in town that can be a part of. We had an electric vehicle show and tell, if you will, this year on Main Street across from the courthouse that’s pictured on the top right, where owners would come out and bring their individual EVs and have residents or otherwise people at the street fair come by and ask, what is about this car? How do I, how would I operate this thing? How would I charge it? Owners would basically describe what it’s like to live with it and what the conversion can be like from a gasoline-powered vehicle and how it can be accomplished. We’ll probably do that again next year, and hope to see everybody there. And the Vandiver School, Elementary School, we had a garden cleanup that 30 youth volunteers helped weed and otherwise set aside these overgrown gardens that needed a little love to get back into the service. So happy to have those things for us here. We have two certifications that we maintain this year. I’m proud to say that we were Silver Certified again by Sustainable New Jersey. It’s a set of guidelines that the borough here, along with residents, can incorporate into their lives and the businesses that kind of show what we can do and best practices, if you will. So Silver is something that is a little tough to obtain, and I forget how many, but I want to say it’s a couple dozen around the state have that certification. So it’s a proud thing to put a feather in our cap for, and we continue with our urban and community forestry plan that’s certified by the NJDEP every year. This year, for grants and funding, we put to work tens of thousands of dollars, which is really great to see. The 35 trees in the Walk Park were estimated in value about $17,000 for just trees and the volunteer time. The Sustainable Jersey PSCNG program, we were given a $2,000 grant to assist in the promotion of this program. And in particular, the website that’s listed here is a page that we are directing residents to, which details the programs and I think can pay dividends in the long run for both the borough and its residents. And just below that is a municipal program that we got the borough into to provide some energy savings for, again, the same topic, energy efficiency in the buildings. And our annual Earth Day event includes New Jersey Clean Communities money that the DPW assists and applies for so that we can continue to clean up our community and promote a lot of stewardship. This year, we did not plant any street trees from the borough fund, but it was, it’s something that we would like to continue to do. Those are available to us through many programs, so it’s good to have. We had an equivalent of, we totaled up every month about 981 hours. It’s an estimate, but we do our best to try to guess it together. If you take what a volunteer is worth in the state of New Jersey, I have to remember the organization, but they say about $33 an hour is what a volunteer’s time is worth. Put some math to that, that’s the equivalent of $33,000 in labor, if you will, that our volunteers here have put together for the borough. So we did pretty good on our 2023 goals this year, but we couldn’t do a couple more. I want to say that the Sustainable Jersey application was a heavy lift. I’m glad that’s only once every three years. It takes a lot of effort, and I want to say thank you to everybody in the council here and Kevin Slukas, the Borough Administrator, that helped us put that together. Next year, we hope to see an environmental resource inventory, an updated one, or a natural resource inventory, as well as an update to our community forestry plan, and a creation of a budget. We do pretty good with what we have available from the borough helping with us, but we do have some requests. And want to increase the true canopy here in the borough, as well as continue to champion the green infrastructure that we can put ourselves here in town. We are a very developed town in a lot of respects, so green infrastructure works well because it tends to be able to be incorporated into that. And that’s where we stand for those at the moment. So in conclusion, I want to repeat these verbatim. We strengthen our community by connecting with others to tackle local challenges that the borough cannot afford due to lack of time, personnel, or money. Engaging in community service provides residents with the opportunity to become active and closer to their community, which has a lasting and positive impact on society at large. The environmental commission’s active outreach in the community gives the residents opportunity to help enrich Somerville and have a positive impact on our local environment. And with that, I want to say thank you to the Borough Council, to everybody that has helped put us through here, other members with the commission and Green Team. Mayor Sullivan, in particular, really appreciate your efforts and everybody that’s been part of it. We do meet every month officially here in this room or on the conference room that’s just adjacent here. December, we take a break and kind of just celebrate together for the holidays. But come and join us again on January for many of the plannings that we do. You can find us through email, through the borough itself, Facebook, Instagram. Those are where we keep the most active. So with that, just want to say thank you for giving us the chance to continue to do what we do. We do enjoy it. Like, it puts a lot of joy in our lives. I think it’s a passionate thing for many residents here in town. You can see by how many folks came out to support us today, so thank you.
Any questions or comments from the dice, starting with Mr. Mitchell?
Very good presentation. I’m quite familiar with the year commission, as I was liaison for many years, but it’s good to hear that you’re continuing your good work for Somerville.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Councilwoman.
Just excited to see the continued good work that I left behind as Chair of the Environmental Commission when I took council seat. So keep up the good work. We’re looking forward to many more great environmental impact pieces in the community. Also, I was at the League of Municipalities and got your little silver award for the plaques.
Good. Thank you, Gina.
Mr. Vroom.
Thank you, Jeff, and the rest of the team for everything you guys do. Look forward to seeing the expanded community garden soon, as soon as we move the fire department over. I know you guys are looking forward to that as well. But thank you very much.
Thanks, yeah, they’ve been playing very nice with us, so it’s hard to come into someone’s turf and ask for us to put a garden down, but they’ve been good to work with.
Councilwoman.
I’m just very proud to live in a town with such a strong environmental commission. I have to say that. And I was recently speaking to some people from Manville who are very interested in picking your brains about how to build their environmental commission. So you should be hearing from them, I’m guessing.
Great.
They might be attending some meetings in the new year. So thank you for everything, and I have been following you on social media, and it’s been fantastic, really great stuff, so thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Mr. President.
Just want to say thank you to you, Jeff, and your team, both parts. Thank you for all you do for our community. Love the work you’re doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy, appreciate it.
I’ll echo everyone’s sentiments. Just a quick question. I noticed on your partners list, you had the Vandiver School listed. Do you have any interaction with the middle school and the high school?
Nothing currently, outside of a couple high school students that have come forward to ask if we can, and each individually, so I guess it’s nice they found us, but ask what we can do to help with this. I think the most recent one was, what can we do with all the pumpkins in town? Where can we compost those things? So we were able to give them some resources to talk to in the region, farms that otherwise have a lot of recycling or composting. That’s a good start, but the High School Environmental Club is one that we certainly would like to engage with on a regular basis. We have limited work with them so far, and that’s, I think, two of the members. One that graduated last year and one that’s on currently Ava Capola has helped us kind of keep some integration, but I mean, we’d love to do more. So James Meister is a high school student, lives in Branchburg, but here in Somerville, he has been very active to come to our meetings and show what we can do. He’s gone beyond the bounds of the school, but we encourage more collaboration, certainly.
Roger, could you effort some communication between the board and the environmental commission for next year? Does anyone, I was, I’ve been out of there for 15 years, and there was the Ecology Club early on, and I guess it’s morphed into the Environmental Club now. Middle school has a little bit of green space there. I’d love to see some gardens, you know, over in that area. So it could involve some of the, you know, the middle school kids, and then they would feed into the high school at some point.
Certainly. Don’t ask me to be the green thumb for planting. I’m not great with it. I know lots, but gardening is not.
You saw my schools at Walnut Street. I’m good at digging the hole, that’s about it. But if, you know, I’ve always been a belief, you get kids at a young age, and if they’re involved at Vandiver, it’s just logical that they will continue on to the middle school and then up to the high school too.
Yeah, certainly.
So we can effort that in any way.
Thank you.
Let us know. And again, to the, you know, to the Green Team, to the environmental commission, we’ve only got two square miles, but it’s the greenest two square miles in New Jersey, and it’s all because of the efforts. There was an article on the news today about global warming, and we’re up like two tenths of a degree from what was projected, which is not good, because they’re talking about the, you know, the polar ice caps melting. And, you know, we’re not that far inland. So I appreciate what you’ve done to keep us green, and anything we can do, you know, let us know.
You hear that, guys? More trees.
More trees.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right, we’ll have committee reports. We’ll start to my right with Mrs. Bonner.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a couple short things. One, from the Recreation Department. They’re really looking forward to Thanksgiving morning for the 5K Turkey Trot. The online registration is closed at this point, but you can still register on the morning of the race. The only thing is, you won’t get a T-shirt, sorry. So, and the race begins at 9:00 a.m. So if you wake up on Thanksgiving morning and you’re like, I need some exercise before I eat all this food, go sign up for the race. You’re going to love it. The Department of Public Works is helping out the Recreation Department for the Turkey Trot, setting up the race. They’re also continuing their work on curbside leaf pickup for the rest of this month. That’s all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, okay. The Federal Railroad Administration has awarded $10 billion grant to Amtrak and its partners to modernize the Northeast Corridor. This includes $59.2 million to update Newark-Penn Station and $3.79 billion in support of the Hudson Tunnel project. So good news for commuters in another decade or so. And on top of that, I just want to wish a happy birthday to our President, Mr. Biden. Today is his 81st birthday. That’s all I have.
Councilwoman.
Well, I think you heard enough about the Environmental Commission. Thank you, Jeff, and the team for all the work you do. And in terms of personnel, we seem to have a revolving door of positions open, but check the website to see if there’s anything open that suits your fancy or your friend or neighbors. So thank you, and also have a happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be grateful for.
Mr. Vroom.
December 2nd is the Holiday Lights Parade. That’s when the fire department and fire departments from all around our area, even far south in our shore towns, come up and go through the boroughs. So it’s a great night to be out. Hopefully, the weather holds out on us this year. But again, it’s, December 2nd starts at dusk and runs until all of the vehicles run out of gas, so hopefully that’s nice and long. But again, it goes through the neighborhoods, it goes down Main Street. It’s the perfect night to go out and hang out on Main Street, get some dinner and some coffee, and sit out there and watch the volunteers go through town. There are, if you go out, thank you to the DSA, if you go out to the stores, they have flyers in the windows, and if you’re so inclined, there’s a QR code there you can donate to make the event even better this year. The volunteers put out a lot of their time and their money to have these events. And so if you have the ability and you want to donate to a great experience, December 2nd, Holiday Lights Parade, again, is put on by the volunteers of the fire department. Love to see everybody there. It’s a great night to spend in Somerville. Thank you.
Wanted to ask you, any response to my appeal to the banks? Have we heard?
I’m waiting to find out.
Let me know, and I’ll go back again.
Sure.
I didn’t realize we have eight banks in such a small town, but we do. I’ve visited them all, made a personal plea to help. Banks are doing very well right now. Interest rates are up on the borrowing side, but also on the saving side. And, you know, that’s, we have volunteers that give their time and their money. And hopefully, some of our corporate friends will, you know, will understand that. So give me an update, and I’ll go around and knock again. Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Honor. The DSA is organizing a Small Business Saturday, which is this Saturday. Come support all of our businesses, not just mine, throughout our borough. They work hard. I talk to many of them on a daily basis, and they’re looking forward to your support. It’s this Saturday. They want to catch any of you at the malls. Come support our district. And tonight’s DSA presentation, budget presentation, that was originally scheduled for tonight, has been moved to December 4th. And I too want to wish everyone in our entire borough happy Thanksgiving for you and your family.
All right. I wanted to thank Ms. Bonner for subbing for me on Girls on the Run. I was out of town and couldn’t get back in time, so I thank you for, you know, taking that time.
You’re welcome.
I’ll echo what some of my council people have said. The holiday season’s coming up. I’ll have a, something on the website later on in the week, which has been my tradition for the last couple of years. But just in general, be thankful for what you have, and find a family that doesn’t have as much, and do something small. Either knock on a door, take out a trash can, rake some leaves. We’re all part of a community, and when we help each other, it makes us all stronger. And that’s all I have. So I need a motion to open for public?
So move.
Second. Council members Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Public session's open. If you'd like to make a comment or have a question, approach the microphone, name an address for the record.
Hi, Margaret Weinberger, 42 North Midor Street, Somerville, New Jersey. And I'm going to use my five minutes. I think I get five minutes to speak.
Three.
Oh, no, I read it yesterday. It's five minutes, sorry.
Okay. We've just used one.
I'm here tonight, and I don't want to cause any he said, she said, and I don't want to get any lawyers involved. In fact, where is Jeremy tonight? I was looking forward to seeing him. I don't want to get any lawyers involved. I don't want any legal mishmash. However, I really want all of the council, and actually, all of the people in this audience. I'm so happy that there are so many people here, because I hope you take this story home with you. I want you to know that there are people being held hostage right here in Somerville, and they need our help, every one of them. While the building that I'm speaking about is under the jurisdiction of the federal HUD program, we, as Somerville residents, have a responsibility to listen and support the concerns of these residents. I want Borough Council and all the people here to understand that I am undertaking the task to get to the bottom of why the residents are living in what is essentially a Gulag. I personally have spoken to at least four people who live in the building, and the issues that they have told me about are extremely concerning. At least two residents have been documenting this case as it moves forward, and I suspect there are more. If this was your mother, or your grandmother, or your grandfather, for that matter, or your uncle, you would feel the same way when you listen to the issues that the people who live in the senior citizen building are dealing with. There are people living in that building that are longstanding Somerville residents. Some of them were born here and grew up here. I started to try to find the local Board of Trustees online to bring my concerns to them, and found a list of trustees. On this list that I found was Father Ron, so I went to Father Ron to speak to him.
I would prefer you not name names.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I won't. He was the only one, and he said, okay. But, okay, I won't name any more names. Okay, so he's no longer on the board. He's not, he has not been for over two years. So, right away, there was an issue that the information that I found was not quite up to date. It means that the people who are responsible for helping the residents of this building are not publicly available, at least as far as I could find. So, it was suggested that I start small and work my way outward to encompass and alert as many people as possible in the community to know about this behavior that the residents are subjected to. What bothers me the most is that one or two people, and one of the people who is barred, is here with me tonight, is barred from entering the building and visiting her mother. Her mother is over 90 years old, has health issues. The facts surrounding the case have been manipulated, and once the HUD management hears about it, I'm hoping they will take some action to come to a resolution. That's my step. I'm going to HUD with all the documentation. Some of the issues that have been found and documented, one man's son is barred from using the staircase when he comes to fix his son's computer. There's only one elevator currently working for over 100 people in the building. When people complain to the manager, they're threatened with eviction. Can you imagine going to your management company and being threatened with eviction? And these are senior citizens. Things that were recreational for the members of the community in the building, bake sales are barred, craft sales barred. The community room is locked, and the residents are not allowed to use it. The security guard turnover has been incredibly high over the time of the management in that building. Wellness checks are almost barred when a person visits and asks for a wellness check on one of their adult, senior adult members of their family. Knitting clubs, all kinds of recreational activities are barred. The guards are instructed to interact minimally and not fraternize with the residents. Instead of having a welcoming guard to help the people that live there, they're barred from fraternizing. I don't want to take up too much more of your time. I just want you to know that when I heard some of the stories that are going on, and not from one person, not from one person who says, you know, oh, I'm being harassed, I'm being excluded. I know people in that building. I've lived in this town almost 30 years. I live behind the building. I know at least five people that live in that building that I speak with. And I'm here tonight to thank you for listening to me, and I'm here tonight to ask the community to please spread this word to everybody that you can possibly spread it to, tell them, and I'm hoping that we get some sort of resolution. We are putting together a packet. I have the name of some HUD officials that are on a higher level of the people who have been reached out to previously that did not respond. The Borough Council has, and I know the Borough Council has not been able to respond because they feel it's out of their jurisdiction. The county has been addressed. They also feel it's out of their jurisdiction. So, I'm just here to let you all know that this is my task for the next couple of months. And thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberger. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes.
Evening.
My name is Erin Holdray. I am a resident of Somerville, 29 Putnam Street, for the past two and a half years. I'm also a lifelong resident of Somerset County. I just want to start out by thanking all of you for everything you've done to make the borough of Somerville such a welcoming and desirable place and a community to live in. Thank you for also allowing me to speak tonight. I am here on behalf of my sister and all the other 1,700 nurses at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital in New Brunswick. They have been on strike since August 4th. The main issue and concern is safe staffing. Nurses are compassionate people who have chosen as their life mission to lead a life of service to others. They are one of the first people patients see upon arrival at the hospital. They work tirelessly to ensure that all patients are taken care of, and that they safe, and that the safety and well-being of their patients is of the utmost importance. I can certainly empathize with that and understand, being a public school teacher, I feel we have very many of the same values as nurses do. The nurses at Robert Woods Johnson have been unable to continue their life mission for the past 110 days. They had been without health insurance since September 1st. These are, these same people who choose to spend their lives caring for others cannot even care for themselves or their families right now. As I said, the main issue and concern is safe staffing. Patient, how sick patients have become has increased immensely. As a result, demands of nurses, as well as other hospital staff members, has increased as well. Studies have shown that proper safe staffing results in lower mortality rates, fewer hospital-acquired injuries and infections, and lower readmitted rates. This is a public health issue, as people come to the hospital for all sorts of reasons, and they turn no one away. Every single person in this room walking on the street has needed the care of a nurse, or someone they love has needed that care. This affects everyone. We would like to encourage the council to reach out to the Assembly people and state senators from your district to ask them to sponsor the Safe Staffing Bill. The bill is S 304 in the State Senate and A 4546 in the State Assembly. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Could you make sure my clerk has those bill numbers?
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Mia Jose, a resident of Metatchen. I'm here along with my colleagues from Robert Wood Johnson Hospital from New Brunswick. We represent the 1,700 nurses who are out on strike for 109 days today, fighting for safe staffing. Robert Wood Johnson is one of the three Level 1 trauma hospitals in the state. We take care of the sickest of the sick. That to have a safe patient ratio is of tremendous importance. But truly, this problem is pervasive and happens to many hospitals across the country, not only Robert Wood Johnson. Unsafe staffing leads to compromised patient care, poor outcomes, medication errors, injuries, even death. It also leads to nursing burnout, which explains why nurses are leaving the bedside in droves. Just like you, we work for the people. We owe it to ourselves and to our profession to stay true in our commitment to patient care in the community we serve. We want to deliver the highest quality of patient care that we are trained to do. This is simply not doable when nurses are given an unsafe number of patients to care for at a given time. We ask the council to please consider passing a resolution tonight to support the Safe Staffing Bill, S 304, or A 4536. State Senator Vitalia Woodbridge is the primary sponsor of this bill. This has been sitting in the legislature for several years, and it's about time to move that along. So, all hospitals in New Jersey, unionized or non-unionized, can benefit from having a safe staffing ratio. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Because I have to raise your hand.
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to say.
Name and address, please.
Suzanne Christie, I do not live in Somerville, but I do live in Bedminster, and I wanted to thank Mr. Sluka because he is the only person from this council who ever acknowledged my emails when I did warn and talk about Somerville senior housing. It is me who's been banned from the building simply for trying to enter it, because my mother's callbox was broken, and the guards insisting that I use a broken callbox. It is my mother who is 90 years old. She has AMD and hearing loss, and I can't enter the building. I haven't been there since June 25th. I signed and affidavit that I wouldn't enter, and the only way to alleviate the issues in that building is through the court system. I'm not, I don't have empty, you know, you know, pockets full of gold to go to the court, and nothing gets alleviated in that building. And I need each and every one of you council members, when someone asks you for help, to at least acknowledge the email, acknowledge and say, received. I'm sorry, can't help you. Not a word from either of you, but this gentleman had the courtesy to say, and help me. I just want you to know that. And there are many people in that building who can't even enter with their own furniture and are being blocked because they haven't made an appointment with the managing director. There's a lot going on in that building, and I hope each and every one of you start to become aware and care. I said, I haven't been since June 25th, which is my mother's 89th birthday. She will be 90 next year, and I hope that she will be alive long enough as Rosalynn Carter was. That's my goal, to be able to visit my parent. And I ask and beseech every one of you to reach out. You know the board members of that building. It's taken me three years to find out who these people are. Day by day, I walk the streets here in Somerville to get information, and I am about to cry because this is unjust, unjust treatment of a person. I've paid my taxes. All I'm trying to do is help my parent. That's all I'm trying to do, and I hope you will step up to the plate, despite the fact that you have no jurisdiction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan, I just want to make you aware that often, often folks will write the entire governing body, and that they're precluded as a group to respond, and that is actually part of my job. So, I don't want to give you the impression that someone didn't respond. And I do recognize, and I appreciate you commenting that I did respond, but I do respond on their behalf. So, just for clarification.
But you have, it doesn't matter, but you all have email addresses.
Any more questions or comments?
Yes.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Michael Tadic. I'm from Metatchen, New Jersey. I come here to speak on behalf of the 1,700 nurses on strike at Robert Wood Johnson University in New Brunswick. As you may or may not know, we've been on strike for 109 days. On September 1st, we got stripped our health insurance. We are fighting for safe staffing standards. I'm a two-time patient, and it was both in the ER. I had to wait more than five hours. When I got in, I didn't even get the proper care I needed. So, I come today to ask you to please help and support the nurses by looking over and supporting and co-sponsoring the S 304 and A 456 bill. We need more nurses inside the hospital, especially at the bedside. If this goes into effect, all of New Jersey hospitals need to comply with this, including the nursing homes. And as the nurses know, we stand with you guys, because I worked at an assisted living, and I understand how it is. So, we're here fighting for safe staffing, and it benefits everybody in this room. So, we're not, we're not here crying and asking you to do stuff. We're just asking you to support us because we talked to the higher-ups the other day, and they don't want to support us. So, we need, we need to start from the bottom and go to the top. So, I hope you guys will understand and support us, because, I don't know, I don't know what else to say. But happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and thank you for giving us nurses the chance to come and speak at your town council meeting.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comment, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmembers Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Public session's closed. We have two consent resolutions. Do we need a separate discussion on either one? All right. 335 is approving Anthony James Smith as an hourly employee at the rate of $22 for the basketball gym supervisor. And 336, amendment and cancellation of borough tax sales certificate is not issued for pilot properties to include lawful interest. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
We have bills and vouchers. Is there someone prepared?
Yes.
Gina, thank you.
In the absence of Councilman Brady, I move for the payment of bills and vouchers in the amount of $445,774.22, plus, plus, wire transfers for $8,554.75. The total motion is to pay for $8,999,849.42.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Since the council has some unfinished business from our executive session that started at 6:30, at this point, council will be adjourning the public meeting to go into executive session. At the end of executive session, we will reconvene, but it's not anticipated that any action or vote take place. I'll take a motion to adjourn the public meeting and go into executive.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right. Regular meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene at the end of executive. Thank you for coming.
Um, so, if you want to leave the, 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 the.